My clock says 4:30. Do you agree, Lee?
Yes, sir. I do.
All right. I will read our statement and then we will get this meeting going. All right. Due to the COVID-19 emergency, the Planning Commission will conduct its essential business by electronic means rather than being required to gather in a quorum of the members physically present in the same location because it is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans. This meeting is in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order 16 and 34, which remains in effect till 11:59 PM on June 30, 2020. With that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And it looks like we do have a quorum. Everybody is present? Is that correct? I think so.
I might want to do a sort of a roll call for the-
Roll call? Okay. We'll go ahead and do a roll call. Larry Crabtree?
Here.
Paul Schwerer?
Here.
Rupert Blackwell?
Here.
Ray Nois?
Here.
Shelley Smith?
Present.
All right. And Bill?
Here.
All right. That's all taken care of. All right. With that, we will start, I guess, we've got the quorum. We will do a pledge of allegiance. If everybody would stand. All right. I'll start us off. I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance.
...to the republic-
To the republic, which stands-
One nation-
One nation, their God-
Their God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll get this started here. We have the minutes from the previous meeting. If y'all would please look over that and then I'll entertain a motion when y'all are ready.
Motion to approve.
Second motion, Nois.
All right. We have Ms. Blackwell made the motion and Mr. Nois seconded. So, all those in favor of approving the minutes from our last meeting? Sorry. On April 20th? Say aye. Oh, wait, I gotta ask you. Sorry. Larry Crabtree?
Yes.
Paul Schwerer?
Yes.
Rupert Blackwell?
Yes.
Bill Comer?
Yeah.
Ray Nois?
Yes.
And Shelley Smith?
Yes.
All right. Everybody, and I vote yes, so unanimous decision there. All right. With that, do we have any reports from officers or staff?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not tonight.
Anybody else? All right. In that, then we have, it looks like-
Chad?
Oh, yes.
This is Winston. Lee, did you get that note from Scott?
From-
I'm back on now.
How's this? Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. We're ready to move forward? All right. On the agenda, any old business? It looks like there's none, so we will move into new business. And we have several public hearings, so we will begin. Our first public hearing is on the Thompson Weaver Street Minor Subdivision Platte. Mr. Lawson, can you fill us in?
Yeah, it's the applicant is requesting an existing lot be divided in two. It's on the corner of Weaver Street and Thomas Street. Zoning is R3. The minimum lot size in that zoning district is 7,500 square feet. Both of the proposed lots meet the requirements as far as the minimum lot size and then lot width. Staff gives it a favorable recommendation.
All right. Now, this is a public hearing, so I will open this up. As a public hearing, Tom, if you are speaking at this public hearing, please state your name and your address. You're allowed two minutes. And with that, I open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on the Thompson Weaver Street Minor Subdivision Platte? All right. With that, I will say we'll move into, and I would entertain a motion so we can begin discussion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is Mrs. Blackwell had the motion?
Wait a second. Mr. Chairman, who was the second on that?
I think it was Ray.
I did.
Ray Nois?
Okay.
I did.
Thank you.
And I do have a question. Am I right in understanding, Lee, you said this is R3 property?
Yes.
High density. So, are both of these lots going to go R3 if we vote dissent?
Those lots are already zoned R3. We're just reviewing the platte. It's one lot and they're dividing it in two.
Yeah, but what I mean is the two divisions, are both divisions going to be R3 now?
Yeah. They will both be zoned R3.
Okay.
All right. All right. Any other discussion?
Call the question.
If that was called a question, once again, I will have to ask each of you your vote and we'll go from there. So, Larry Crabtree?
Yes.
Paul Schwerer?
Yes.
Rupert Blackwell?
Yes.
Bill Comer?
Yes.
Ray Nois?
Yes.
Sorry, guys.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so all seven approve.
Do we have a polka fan, am I guess?
No, no, you have a telephone that has- Hey, I'm a music major. What are you gonna say?
Hey, I don't have a problem with polka.
All right. So, let's move to our next item. It's going to be another public hearing. It is the Dunnington Cedar Lane Minor Subdivision Platte, creating two into one. Mr. Lawson, can you fill us in?
Okay. This is very similar to the first one, except it's not on a corner lot. This is on Cedar Lane. They're splitting one existing lot into two lots. It's R1, which is low-density residential. It meets the minimum lot sizes and the minimum lot width for the R1 district. Right now, they've got a circular drive that's going to be on Lot 1. They're recording an easement where Lot 2, where the existing house will be on Lot 2, and they'll access it through an easement on the north end of the circular drive. And then the other section of the circular drive will be with Lot 1, and whenever they construct a new home on it, they would use that curb cut. Staff gives it a favorable recommendation.
Okay. With that, this is a public hearing. We'll open up this discussion to the public. Once again, please state your name and your address, and you're limited to two minutes. So, the public hearing is open. Anybody like to speak? All right. I will close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion so we can start discussion.
Move to approve. Second.
All right. That was Larry Crabtree with the motion and Rupert Blackwell with the second. So, now we have the floor open. Any questions, any discussion? We have Andy Best. I think you were, were you the one who did this survey, Andy? So, anybody have any questions?
Andy, you're-
I have a question, Lee. That-
Yeah, I didn't realize my microphone was on.
That driveway that is on the, where the existing house is, is that driveway going to be sufficiently on to Lot Number 2?
Yeah, they're doing a 20-foot ingress egress easement across it. It should be sufficient. The Public Works Department did review the platte and approved it, so it meets their standards as far as the spacing on Cedar Lane as far as driveways are concerned.
So, the easement will be on the platte?
Yeah, it's already on it. It's a red hatch mark that's like on the lot line between the proposed new lots.
Okay.
There's a common side lot line between them.
All right. Any other questions, any other discussion?
Call the question.
If not, we'll call the question. All right. I will ask each one of you. Larry Crabtree?
Yes.
Paul Schwerer?
Yes.
Rupert Blackwell?
Yes.
Bill Comer?
Yes.
Ray Nois?
Yes.
And Shelley Smith?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, so it's a unanimous decision on that one. All right. We'll move forward. All right. Next one on the agenda is Flat Rock Phase 2 Minor Subdivision Final Platte. Lee, can you fill us in?
Okay. Back in 2018, the applicant had a plan approved by the Planning Commission on Avoca Road. It was the first phase of Flint Rock. It was eight lots. And this one is sort of an extension. It's just really adding two lots to the north end of that subdivision, and they're going to also extend the sidewalk along Avoca Road as well. They are shifting the lot line of the existing Lot Number 8. That was part of the first phase, a little bit to give Lot Number 9 more space. There is a driveway easement that's going to cross Lot 9 to give Lot 8 access, and that's due to the detention area and the front yard. They're trying to meet the stormwater requirements for the subdivision, so they had to install a detention area. So, that easement will give Lot 8 access to Avoca Road. It is zoned R1. The total size of the subdivision is 1.82 acres. All three lots do meet the minimum size in the R1 zoning district. Staff gives it a favorable recommendation.
All right. With that, we'll open this up for public hearing. Once again, if you are here, please state your name and address, and you will be limited to two minutes. So, I open the public hearing. Anybody here to want to speak about this one?
I'll say something on this one.
Okay. State your name and your address.
Andy Best.
Okay.
273 Haynes Hollow Road.
All right.
273 Haynes Hollow Road, Winchester, Tennessee. I'm the land surveyor who did it. If you notice, in the west edge of the property, there's a 20-foot utility easement that's going to allow each of those two new lots, 9 and 10, to have sewer water access onto the back.
Okay. All right. Anything else in the public hearing? With that, then, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion so we can start discussion.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right. So, that was Mr. Crabtree with the motion and Mr. Comer was the second. All right. It is open for discussion. Any questions?
Yes. Andy, as I look at the picture map of this, is it my understanding that both lots are going to share that center driveway portion of that U-shaped driveway?
The driveway, the driveway ingress egress easement that I've shown is there because the garage for the dwelling that's shown to back out to have enough back entry, the driveway will stay back in, to get back into the lot that it's serving, but it was just too tight right there with 11 feet between the corner of the house and the edge of the property.
Understand that. Okay. That helps some because it looks like it's planned to share it.
I would say that 9 and 10 are probably going to share a driveway on their line because that's the high point of the hill. They'll have better view both directions from that spot.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
I'm not seeing, Larry, I'm not a Mr., I'm not seeing a U driveway on this one. Am I missing something?
Now, I am looking at the Dunnington Cedar Lane. That's the one I'm supposed to be looking at, right?
We're at Flint Rock Phase 2. We're on Flint Rock, which is 2.
Next one.
Am I too far up? Thompson Weaver, is that the one? No.
Detail on page 25.
25. Okay. Where did that come from? I'm like, what in the world is, it's got a U, that one had a U-shaped look to it.
Well, he gets calibrated there. The utility easement for those lots in Emerald Meadows down there, are there existing dwellings there? Do the landowners know that they're going to be giving up an easement there?
The property is owned by-
Go ahead, Andy. Sorry.
The property that the utility easement goes across was owned by Alan Howard at one time. Alan conveyed that easement to Joe Denby. Then Alan has sold those two lots, but those lots are still vacant. The new owner is aware of-
Okay. I mean, if I own that lot, I would want to know that I'm getting an easement drawn on me, so.
Okay. Now, I got a picture on page, what is it, 25, 26, 27?
Yeah, 25 is the survey.
Yeah. Okay. I'll have to go back and look at that other one.
So, do we have any other questions or discussions on Phase 2?
I have a question, Chad.
Yes, sir.
Question for Lee and for Andy. It seems like we are stretching the, having to make some, give some easements here. We've been doing that on two now, just to get driveways in. So, we're not really having allocated a amount of space for a single-family dwelling as we would normally have. We're having to accommodate that by sharing driveways and doing easements. I don't think that's a good precedent for us to be entering into. Not that I'm so much opposed to this specific instance, but I oppose it on the grounds that it's a bad precedent to be setting. I'll just leave that for the other commissioners to consider.
All right. Any other discussion or question?
So, I want to just make sure I'm understanding. So, we're approving a subdivision of the lots, correct?
Yes.
And which lots are we, are the ones? It's 8, 9, and 10, correct?
Yes. What's going on is they're splitting one lot in two. They're creating Lot 9 and 10. Lot 8 already exists, but what's going on with it is the side lot line that's to the north is being shifted a little further south to give more space to Lot 9. So, if you look at the platte, they'll say there'll be a dashed line that'll say old lot line, and that's the lot line that's being shifted to the south.
And was Lot 8, whoops.
You're on mute.
It was Lot 8 unable to, so I'm seeing the easement in the detention basin, and Andy, I think, spoke to the detention basin a second ago, but where is the driveway? I'm trying to find the driveway for Lot 8.
I would assume it's going to follow the 10-foot. Go ahead, Andy.
The house is currently under construction, so there's not an official driveway yet, but the driveway will go in between the northerly boundary of Lot 8 and the edge of that detention basin will squeeze between the house and the lot line, but the driveway may have to have a little backout area into 9. That's why we gave it the ingress egress easement, so that they can access their garage. But I'd say 95% of the driveway will be on Lot 8, if not more.
The other point that I, as looking at, as I see the curve in the road there, that is a relatively sharp curve, and it appears that that driveway is right in the middle of that curve. Is that a good idea? I don't think that's a very good idea for safety.
I can address that, Lee, if you'd like for me to.
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay. If they locate the driveway in the easement, right at the center of the curve there, it actually gives a little better sight distance both directions. Sometimes you will intentionally pull into the center of the curve to give sight distance both ways. All of these lots, back when Lots 1 through 10 were proposed on the original platte, you know, we looked at sight distance related to each of them. I haven't gone out and looked at it regarding this platte here today, but we had looked at it in the past, but it looks like it would actually be an improvement if they did pull it to the center of the curve.
Let me simply say that I disagree with that premise of putting a driveway right in the center of a curve. That just doesn't, it defies logic. Sorry.
Andy, did you not say that that was- Did you not say, did you not say, Andy, that this easement was going to be right at the crest of the hill?
No, there's no hill.
Yes, yes. The line between 8 and 9 is kind of at the top of the hill, so it may be in a curve, but it's on top of a hill, so you'll be looking down in both directions. I can guarantee that the sight distance there is perfectly adequate.
There's no hill there.
All right. Any other discussion?
There is a hill there. Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion on this? If not, I'm going to call the question. And I will, any others? All right. All right. I will ask. Larry Crabtree?
Yes.
Paul Schwerer?
No.
Okay. Rupert Blackwell?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Mr. Nois?
No.
Shelley Smith?
A yes.
And I am a yes, so that is five to two. Platte passes. All right. We will move to the next one. And it is Woodlands Phase 2 Major Subdivision Construction Plans. These are plans to install the structure for 44 lots. Lee, can you fill us in?
You know, the Planning Commission already approved the preliminary platte with the condition that a second entrance be placed in the subdivision. The developer has done so, and these are the construction plans to install the streets and the infrastructure, the other infrastructure, water, sewer lines, and sidewalks. The plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and has been reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department, so staff gives it a favorable recommendation.
All right. With that, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. We will, once again, name and address in two minutes. So, with that, I will open this up to the public for anybody that would like to speak.
Hi, this is Kenny Sadler, 4866 Woodbury Highway, Manchester. I'm the engineer for the project, and I'm available for any questions that anyone would have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sadler. All right. If there's any other from the public, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion so we can start discussion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have Mr. Nois making the motion, and Mr. Crabtree has seconded the motion. The floor is open. We'll have discussion.
Can I ask a question really fast? Sorry, there's a screaming baby in the background, so I apologize. I think this question's probably for Lee. Lee, I know we did that connectivity thing where it was like the 1.4 that we all agreed on. Does this meet that, or if not, is it because we approved this before we approved that? Does that make sense?
This one meets the minimum. Sitting here, I'm thinking about it, what it is. I believe it was four. And four nodes, and I think it was 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 links. So, I mean, it was four. It was 1.5. Because we kind of count the second entrance as two. That was one of the, sort of an incentive to, so they would put a second entrance in.
And the other, another question I had, and this was just when I was reading through this yesterday and the day before, is I know that there have been concerns about traffic and turning in and out of this subdivision. Sorry. And the question was for me is, does it make sense for, and I'm sure you definitely already thought about this, making sure it's just a right-hand turn onto Avoca as opposed to a right and left? Does that make, you know what I mean?
We had a traffic engineer when they studied the intersection and the road and even looked at this subdivision, what they were proposing. They didn't think that this was going to decrease the level of service on that road and that there was anything that was abnormal about what was being proposed there. Scott probably could elaborate more on what kind of engineering studies they did.
And I remember that study. I was just wondering if this is something additional that could help, you know, with traffic flow. If it was like a right turn only out of the thing as opposed to some, can I make a left? I'm just throwing it out there. I didn't know if it was something that was ever discussed.
It was not recommended by the Christian Smith.
Okay.
Lee, I have a couple of questions. Could you help? I think some of the confusion is that, I'm not sure, I guess everybody, the engineers all have a copy of the agenda, but you included several comp development plan goals and policies that apply to this, starting with, could you help, could you walk me through why these are included in this agenda and how you see that these apply? For instance, number one, conservation goal, develop an open space network which serves conservation, recreation, and buffering purposes? I don't know. I mean, if by open space you mean a field of impervious surfaces to avoid vault trees in the woodlands, then how exactly do you see this appearing to a conservation goal?
Well, the subdivision's going to include detention areas that are part of this plan, which will be conserving property and it's also helping water quality.
Okay, because this is in the Upper Duck watershed. Is that correct?
Uh, I have no, I don't know the names of all the different watersheds. That would be a good question for Scott since he's our consulting engineer.
Because I do realize that this is not actually in a flood zone, but it is upstream from a lot of places that are, and I know that increasingly flooding is an issue downstream from this development, so I just was hoping that you guys could shed any light. Again, I'm new to this commission, and so I'm coming in. I was not at the other meetings where the preliminary development plan, the platte was approved, so I'm just trying to wrap my mind around why these goals were included as applicable and how they are. Because I, anybody can help with that?
I can just add that, yes, it is in the Duck River drainage basin, and stormwater detentions provided in the large basin there that's shown on the construction plans. Then, from a stormwater standpoint, stream buffer requirements are also shown for stormwater quality provisions that meet the city requirements. But yes, it is being detained, fully detained, and they meet their pre and post runoff rates.
So are you, or do you have any special, uh, plantings or is there anything planned for those to help with water quality at those ponds? I mean, I realize that that's going above and beyond what's required by this municipality, but do you have any plans for, for landscaping around those drainage areas to help that?
I, I think that's a question for Kenny to chime in, Kenny Sadler, but, uh, that, that is not a requirement from the city in our current requirements, our permits through the state.
Okay.
So I had a question as well. Um, I know that a while back, gosh, it might've been two years ago at this point, um, Mr. Crabtree and I went, had, went to a stormwater meeting and we talked about different ways that, um, that we can mitigate the issues that we're seeing in that area with stormwater. And one of the things that was talked about was, I think, impervious concrete and all these other things that I'm not seeing on some of the, the site plans that we're getting in or the construction plans that we get in. Is that because it's not something we have an expectation of? And is there a possibility that we can at some point add those into our codes to require things like that? Or is that prohibitive?
I'm not aware of that as far as from a, from a zoning or subdivision standpoint. Scott, is there a, are we allowed to create a more strict or add, uh, more regulations to our stormwater regulations? Is that...
The city is allowed to be more restrictive than the state permit requirements, but, you know, we, we've kind of been in this several year waiting mode, waiting for TDEC to make revisions to their, to their permit and pass down some more additional requirements, but they have not yet passed those. So we've got some draft revisions or revisions pieced together, but they've just been on hold for a couple of years waiting for TDEC. So, you know, right now we just meet their current requirements.
Is it feasible for us to at some point, like where, where does the onus lie for us to update ours if they're not moving forward with this? Does that make, do you know what I'm, I don't know if I'm getting across what I'm trying to ask.
Oh, yes, uh, yes, and that's the reason we have proposed a number of provisions to try and, uh, anticipate and meet and be ready for the new standards that come out. But, uh, really the city has, has directed us over the years to meet the standards of the state and, and meet those only. So until those new requirements, the new permit comes out from TDEC and we, we debate that issue, do we go above and beyond? Do we meet the standards? That's the point in time, yes, we need to have those discussions.
And, and this might be a question also that I'm not sure, um, if we know, but is that, is that best practices for, for all cities that we just meet the state standards and don't go above and beyond? Or is it something that we as cities should be looking at as a whole, um, whether or not? Or is that the standard?
Well, I will say that a number of cities jumped ahead of the TDEC permit revisions and made significant changes above and beyond, while others have elected just to hold tight, keep their current regulations in place and just meet the standards. So it varies. I mean, it varies widely across the state. So every time, you know, we as a consulting engineer doing work in other cities, we have to go to their requirements and they vary greatly. So, but over the years, yes, the city of Teleoma and the surrounding cities really have said, we're gonna meet the, the minimums, the TDEC permit requirements.
And Scott, are those variations really, are, are they actually driven by, um, the economic factors and the, um, factors of, of the town that you're talking about as far as, uh, uh, housing needs and things like that? Is that what really drives those ones that are less restrictive than the others?
Well, I, I think the answer is yes, but of course, when you say less restrictive, they are still very restrictive. Uh, it's just, we've not, Teleoma's not passed some that we deal with and the city of Franklin, Brentwood, Mount Juliet, some of the areas that have gone above and beyond. And, uh, so is it back to economics? And yes, possibly so, but still, it's, it's, it is restrictive.
Now, on the plat map, or on the building map that I see, there's a large section, uh, around lot one, lot two, and back over that way that is just called out as common area. And I don't know who can speak to this for me. And there is a large section of it that shows as common area. And I'm wondering, is that meant to be green space and just left to be the way it is and not to be, uh, cleared, developed and all that? Can somebody speak to that?
Lee, you want me to take that one?
Uh, go ahead, Kenny.
Okay, uh, the common areas, the, these were areas that were shown and identified on the preliminary plat that Andy Best had taken through and got approved. So that, that is a common area. The stream buffers are also common areas. And with these common areas, uh, they will have to have specific plans. Uh, and Mr. Crabtree, we've gone through that before as far as, uh, the specific plans for common areas, how they will be maintained and things like that. All of those items, uh, all the requirements for that and the maintenance of it, uh, the homeowner association and restrictions and things like that will all have to be approved before the final plat can be approved. Uh, this is just the construction plans for the roads and the utilities. But all of those items will have to be approved by the, I think by the mayor and alderman, uh, prior to the final plat getting approved.
Well, I think they'll also have to come through the planning commission, but that allows us, I mean, eh, when you look at it, that gives us some drainage and some, uh, open areas where water can seep into the ground and, and help with the stormwater conditions, if I'm right.
Yes, a- and also just to speak to Ms. Smith's, uh, comment, you know, this detention area is, uh, basically an overdesigned area and it does reduce, uh, the stormwater. It will reduce it anywhere probably from ten percent to thirty percent going from the two-year storm to the hundred-year storm. So it, it's quite a good reduction there, uh, on the pond for this development.
That's, that's great. That's good to know. Um, and this is not an indictment on this particular development, but I would like to speak to Mr. Crabtree's comment. I, honestly, I don't, I don't think that sustainability and profitability are mutually exclusive. I, uh, I don't think it's not all the, the ordinances and regulations we have in place are driven economically. I think that it could just be a factor, a sheer factor just maintaining the status quo. You know, just maybe we just haven't made any updates and we should revisit. Uh, maybe there's a lack of education, I, I don't know. But, um, going back to this particular development, I don't, maybe I'm missing it. I don't see anything about the, the curb type. If, I'm looking on Google Earth and it looks like you have rolled curves in the rest of the development. Is that, is that, is that the plan for this, this section as well, the space?
Yes, yes, it is extruded curb on the, on the property here.
Okay, and is that, is that factor done to, I know there's a lot of times that can add to the perceived depth of the, of the street. And then I know also, and you may not, not all of you may agree with this, but sometimes, uh, detractors of the roll curb will say, although it's very ubiquitous in rural areas and suburbs, but it's a slightly passe and ground on in, in newer developments in other areas. So the main detractors will say that it actually encourages, it does not reduce speed through, for the through traffic. And so now that we have two entrances, is there any concern that the rolled curb will just encourage people to fly through there from one, one entrance to the other? And, uh, did you guys consider putting a different type of curb type in there? And I don't, I'm, and Lee, maybe you can speak to this. Has tell I'm ever considered? Yeah, I don't, I couldn't find anything, although I did have a full day today, but I briefly looked before this to see if we had anything in any of our regulations about curb type.
Uh, the, no, we don't have anything to subdivision regulations as, as far as requirements of curb type. Uh, that would probably, if, if we had it, would be in the, the street standards ordinance.
Right. Yep, I did see it in there. Is, is anybody concerned that that's, that maybe a different curb type would probably might help with through traffic speeds?
I, I'm not sure. I, I don't know. I can't speak to that, but I do know that there, this kind of reminds me of Jennings Point in the way, um, I'm sure we've probably heard people say, everybody drives through Jennings Point to get to the next place. And I could foresee that happening here as well, like the speeding through one neighborhood. So I, I don't know, till you know more about that, seems like than I do about the curb type, but it, I, I could see that being a problem. But, um, I am glad we have two entrances, but I, I could see people using it as a connector to get through.
Yeah, Shelley, I definitely share your concern with speed through there and the fact that we're creating a short...
Yeah, I just want, I, I'd like to, I just would, I'm just, I'm not, you know, again, I'm not saying it needs to be a requirement, but I think it's definitely worth consideration, some traffic calming measures through there.
I, I, I definitely agree. Um, the wide streets and the curb streets, um, probably big enough to have street parking on it, in all honesty. Um, going to be basically a food fair for anybody that's trying to get from the country club area to Nescot. Um, and, um...
I think it's a psychological effect that whenever you see, uh, a roll curb, it's less restrictive than, it's a psychological effect you see whenever you see it.
Yeah, the, the wider, wider clear streets for sure. Um...
Or, or just the curb type, if it could be not rolled and, uh, by long day, it's escaping me what the other curb type is called, where it's the vertical profile. We've got several engineers on here, help me out.
That's not right.
Gutter.
That's not my engineering field.
I think, I think we're kind of getting off in the weeds with the curbs. Honestly, this would be for another meeting.
This is the street, this is the construction plans for the road.
I know, but this is the stand, the thing is, is we have already have a san- standard set that we need to vote if the standard has been met. And that's what our jobs are. So that's where we need to come back to. And I understand that there are definitely, in talking in this, we, I see concerns that we need to maybe address. I don't know if that is through the commission or if that's through the board of mayor, alderman with the, um, water flows and what, how this goes, but we have to look at, do they meet the standard and if it meets the standard?
And that's, yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm hearing what Chad's saying. I'm just wondering where the onus does lie if we want to one day at some point look at these standards.
I agree with that.
And that's my question to Lee or to Jennifer, if she's there as well. Who, where does the onus lie and who comes up with that, et cetera? Does it, why would the planning commission to make recommendations? Um, where, what would, if we want to go down this route at some point, what would that process?
And, and why do you need me here if I'm not, we, I don't make comments on, on how, whether, where I stand with this? So, I mean, Lee can go through and see if they've met their recommendations or not. As he did.
And I, I think it's, I think it's on us to determine whether or not this is, is value to the community and the, and the neighboring and, and, you know, the, the landowners and whatnot. Um, you know, and I, and I, and I definitely, you know, before my time on this mission, um, I definitely, you know, I, I was kind of following this one to begin with and, uh, and, and really found it to be kind of a, a poor move to create the through, the through streets on it. Um, and I, I have grave concerns about that, in all honesty. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, have my kids in a subdivision, um, people going probably off, off guard for that.
But at the same time, this...
You're muted, Rupa.
I'll say it. Final comment. Chad, while we're here to approve this layout, I think we're, would be derelict in our duty if we did not consider the impact of the traffic flow. If you were anywhere on the north side or northeast side of town and you're headed to Interstate twenty-four, which way would you go? You would cut through Country Club and hit Ovoca Road. Logical thing to do would be to take this cut off through this subdivision to get to Riley Creek Road. I think it's obvious what the traffic flow is going to be. Do we want to create that standard traffic flow through there? That's something that I think is our responsibility to look at.
Thank you, Ray. Also, you know, I've, I'm sorry, Chad, I mean, I, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I will say, I mean, if you have me here and you have me list, read through these one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight comprehensive development plan goals and policies that apply to this application, the fourth one down says, provide for the movement of people and goods throughout the city with safety, efficiency and reasonable access. And you asked me to consider those and then I don't comment on it, then it's on me. So I felt like I needed to make my comments.
No, I, I, I'm not saying that. And like I said, I think that these are valid concerns, that we just need to find the direction we need to go in, but we have to look at what we have in front of us now and just that we have been called to and, yeah. We, I think the standard is there, so there is no discrimination. If you meet the standard, I think that, that you meet the standard. And we, this way, it, it guts out all the discrimination of, well, I like this and I don't like that. The standard is the standard. If it's met, it's met. If it's not, it's not.
But we don't have anything, but we don't say yes and we don't say no. And I'm just making a point that not requiring, uh, to at least consider a different type of curb is derelict in, in, in my, my role here.
Yeah, uh, could I speak, could I speak to Ms. Smith's comment?
Sure. Thank you.
Uh, this, this is Kenny again.
Hi, Kenny.
Uh, hi there. Uh, I appreciate your comments and concerns, uh, and I'm a little confused with this conversation with regard to the connection, but, uh, with regard to the curbs, the roll curb versus the curb and gutter, I don't know that there's anything, uh, that, that correlates, you know, the speed or the, with people coming through. Uh, obviously a curved street, uh, is gonna be the same width, I guess, whether it's curb and gutter, whether it's the extruded curb that we have. So I don't know how that relates to the speed of the traffic. I think either are gonna be very comparable and, and maybe Scott, uh, knows something there that I'm not, but I've never known of, of the difference in the extruded curb versus curb and gutter. If I'm understanding what your, uh, concern is, I, I haven't known that as it relates to speed. I, I guess the, the, the issue though, that, that I was concerned with myself, you know, this plan was approved as a, uh, as a cul-de-sac pla- uh, cul-de-sac plan and it did not have a through street. Uh, the owner did not want the through street. Uh, I did not want the through street and the surveyor did not want a through street. But this was a requirement that had to be met by the city of Teleoma. Uh, I was assuming the planning commission. So, uh, so I'm not, I guess I'm a little confused on, this plan was brought back in to add the through street. It never had the through street before, uh, but could not get approved without the through street.
Right. And I, I actually was not sitting on the planning commission at the time that it was approved. And just to clarify, the American Planning Association has put out multiple studies that says that a rolled curb will actually will not slow down traffic and that people, there's have, their studies reveal that people feel that they can speed through areas with the roll curb. And that's why it's been such a problem in the suburbs. But, you know, again, it's not...
Now, are you talking like a speed bump? Are you, are you referring to a speed bump?
It's the Ameri- they, it's the actual curb itself. Whenever it's rolled, it, there's no psychological deterrent in the fact that you could just fly through there, because if you hop up on a curb, nothing, you know, it's not skin bad for your car, but it's, you know, if you see this actual, those others, the type of curb that you're, has the more vertical profile, it will slow people down. But again, Chad's probably right, we're probably getting off on a, on a, I'm going down a rabbit hole with you guys. I, I wasn't sitting here whenever the first, you know, the other plans were approved. And going by the, the regulations that we have in place right now, I would say that it, there's nothing with this design that does not meet those, that low bar.
Well, I was in charge of the planning commission when these plans were approved after we put in what we call the connectivity plan. after we put in what we call the connectivity plan. And the reason, the reason the uh extra entrance and egress was added was because we have too many places in this town where if you took the entrance on egress on the bottom part of the diagram off and you just had a T shape, if any kind of of um tornado or fire or whatever happened on the end of the street where we enter, the people couldn't get out of the subdivision. There was no way out.
Right, and I understand that. And I see the point being that the the previous plan, the the commission said, hey, we'll prove this if you will provide a second entrance. And now here I sit here saying like, what the heck? So, yeah, I I understand. So that um, I I guess, I know everybody wants to get home to families and dinner, so.
Is there anyone else that has anything they'd like to say on this?
Yeah, let me say something on that. Uh, we we did uh ask them to put that road in there at at uh entrance and I believe it's Riley Creek Road, this is a new one. But one of the concerns was that all of this traffic out of this subdivision was going to flow into Ovoka Road and it wouldn't be an alternative. There wouldn't be another place to go. So this at least kind of splits that traffic and it's not all going in one direction. And that was kind of the reason behind it. I'm kind of concerned, though, that uh Telahoma already has a reputation of being difficult to deal with on these kinds of things. And now, I mean, I sit here and listen and all I see is difficulty, you know? I see a builder that's trying to come in and and build something that's going to be nice for our city. And we're sitting here nitpicking him to death. And I ju, I just feel that it's time to to get on with it and approve this and let this builder and developer go ahead and do something that I feel is going to be good for the city.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Anybody else? If not, I'll call the question and we will do a roll call vote. Larry Crabtree?
Yes.
Paul Schwer?
No.
Rupa Blackwell?
Yes.
Bill Comer?
Yes.
Ray Nois?
Yes.
Shelley Smith?
No.
And I will vote yes. So we had six, five to two. With that, do we have any other new business?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Lee, on the fact, though, I know there was a lot of concerns brought up. Could you maybe direct us in how we can maybe look at some of this stormwater questions and curbing questions and trying to look at our standard and see which directions we need to go in that?
Yeah, well, I mean, we we could schedule a study session at the planning commission where where we could discuss this. Uh, and then once, come up with sort of a a game plan of how you want to go, what directions you guys want to go to, uh, then we would, you know, of course, we need to incorporate the city administrator and and of course, Scott and public works department as well, too.
Would everybody be open to that?
Yes.
Sure.
I would, I would like to see that, Lee. And additionally, like, it takes on this other previous points, like, what what the city of Telahoma plans on doing is like traffic calming measures in general. Um, there, you know, there's a laundry list of stuff like that, um, from the uh community of transportation professionals. And um, and kind of, it's things that we should be taking into account when we're, when we're considering uh putting in new roads for sure. Um, and going back and rather than having to go back and add these later because we realize we've created a problem.
And and also, I know that in the last board of mayor and alderman meeting, we talked a lot about the comprehensive development plan, or at least I mentioned it like 100 times. Uh, if we could also add that and discuss that on the um, in the study session, I would love to have one. Amazing.
I I agree. And I I don't think that anybody wants to be difficult. I think if it's just, if our regulations are so vague, if we could just keep it all very clear and all in agreement, then it would make it a lot easier for everybody, um, which hopefully speed things up.
All right.
Chad, let me weigh in on that.
Yes, sir.
Remember, we are a planning commission. We've not been doing much planning. We've been acting on zoning and ordinances and did a little bit of nitpicking here and there. But we've not really been doing much planning. So I certainly advocate us having a study session where we can get down to the what's really necessary for our city. And that's for a longer range plan where everybody knows what's coming. So somebody like Mr. Curl, Mr. Sadler, know what the requirements are ahead of time and they, we don't have to iron those out when we get in a board session. That's why I advocate a planning session, study session.
So Lee, just let me know.
I need that, but but, you know, another, another part of that is the uh the zoning map. Uh, I I think our zoning map has a lot of inconsistencies in it. And that's the reason that we've had some extra difficulty trying to consider some of these uh zoning changes that have been requested. And I think that that goes with the the overall city plan as a zoning map. And I I I hundred percent support. Let's sit down and 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 try to figure out what's best and come up with something that we can live with and be proud of.
Yes, I certainly agree with that. I think it's time for us as a planning commission to begin acting like a planning commission instead of just acting on zoning ordinances, approving splitting one lot into two lots and approving a egress for a driveway. That's, we we could do better than that.
All right.
Goals.
Lee, if you could, we'll work with Lee and Jennifer and we will try to get a study session set up and so we can discuss a lot of this out. And I appreciate everybody being here. Um, thank you for your time. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 15th. So according to what I read earlier, we will have another Zoom meeting. And um, we will go from there. Um, with any of that, I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Bye, guys.